Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. Call to order. And our first item is to review and approve the agenda. If everyone could look at that and see if they have any concerns or changes that they'd like We have a motion to approve. Thank you, Allison. Is there a second on that? Thank you, Sangita. All those in favor of us keeping the agenda the way it is, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous to the group that's sitting down. Our second item is to review the minutes and to approve the minutes. People want to take a minute to check those. Any questions or changes? If there are no changes or suggestions, can I have a motion that we accept? Thank you, Jean. And a second on that? Thank you very much, Mrs. Ration. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. All right. And that was you next? If you weren't here. Yes, if you weren't here. Two absences, excuse me who were absent. Thank you, Lisa. Excuse me. We now have comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker at a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? There being no one that I see? We'll move on then to reports and recognition. Excuse me. Our first report and recognition is a technology update with Mr. Miller. Would you like to introduce that?
I'm Dr. Corenti.
Dr. Corenti, thank you.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Miller, who will be giving the Board of Education an update this evening on our pilot that we conducted on X to One at the high school this past spring, winter and spring. And also, a brief update on where we are with the curriculum writing that has occurred with the Technology Department. It's also somewhat bittersweet this evening because this is Dr. Miller's last presentation to the Board of Education. As you are aware, Dr. Miller will be accepting a cabinet position in Ridgefield, and we're very proud of him. But we will also miss all that he has given to the district these past 11 years. So Dr. Miller has been here for 11 years and really has been on the forefront of leading us in our technology. So thank you, Dr. Miller. We appreciate it. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce you, who I know you do have a couple people here this evening.
Thank you. And I do want to introduce Tom Hanahan, who is the Techno Integrator here at the high school. He's been a member of the X to One committee since we started the initiative. And Dr. Luduk, who joined the committee this past year as principal of the high school, and has had a lot of wonderful contributions to make as well. I think I got everybody that's on the committee. Yes, perfect. Okay. Each of you should have a copy of the presentation that we provided to you. And the presentation is on screen, and I'll go on to the website tomorrow. Can you hear me now? Perfect, okay. Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for providing me the opportunity to present to you this evening. I'm going to focus on two main areas this evening. First, our mobile learning initiative. And second, an update on our digital learning, primarily around the curriculum work that we've done over the course this past year. Is that a slight lag on the computer tonight? Let's start with our mobile learning initiative. As a refresher, we have had a process and a committee in place since the fall of 2013. Rather than going through all those details with you again this evening, which I presented to you at least twice already, we have included those reference documentation in the back of this presentation in the appendix. You have copies of that material. Tonight, I'm going to share with you the results of our pilot that we ran this spring. We did a survey of our students, parents, and teachers at the end of the pilot. So what I'm going to share with you are the results of those pilot survey questions. And we're going to talk about the proposal that's going to be put into place for next year for the BYOT as we expand out. And the proposal that we're making to the Board of Education, which will be a conversation over the next two months, is to begin a required BYOT program at the high school in ninth grade in January of 2016, followed by a larger-scale rollout the following September. And you might ask yourself, why start with the ninth grade? We feel that's the best opportunity to really start with that change in the culture with the students and the teachers in the get-go and the first enter the high school. And begin that cultural change with that student body, and then work our way up from As I mentioned, we conducted a survey of the students at the end, and these are some of the findings that we got from the survey results from our students. First, the students recognized the use of their device helped them learn. They spoke about how they use Google Docs to write, how they access eBooks to read, and how they use these tools as organizational tools. And they used those organizational tools for notes, for calendars, and they recognized that it made them a more efficient and more productive learner. And they actually had those words in the feedback that they provided to us. The students also began to use their devices in other classes. This was something that we were really interested to find out. Would they go into the other classes and begin to use those devices in self-directed ways? Something that's not required in those classes, but have they figured out how else they can use them as learners? And they were doing that. And this tells us that the students saw the value and use those mobile learning devices for their own learning needs. Students also reported how they used their device in and outside of class. We had done a small focus group with some of these students with our committee, and one of the students spoke at length of how he took his laptop with him, and before a sports event, before another activity, he would sit down and he would be able to work. He'd be able to get his work done, whereas in the past, he wouldn't have had those resources with him. And what that tells us is that our initiative of anywhere, anytime, any device really fits within what our students were telling us was happening. And this goes back three years ago. When we developed our technology plan, and the overall theme was anytime, anywhere, and any device learning, this really jives with the results they were getting. The students were using these devices throughout the school day and outside of the school as well. The students also said weight made a difference. Those of them that had a larger laptop didn't necessarily want to carry it around the school all day long. They wanted to leave in their class and leave it somewhere. So weight made a difference. And that's one of the reasons we're selecting BYOT, because it gives the students an opportunity to select the device that fits within their own needs, and weight is one of those needs that they need to consider. And teachers were more available off-hours, so students were able to contact their teachers, able to get feedback from their teachers. They recognized that the digital feedback they got from Google Docs, digital feedback that they got from other interactive response systems where the students would respond, and teachers collect the data and respond and inform their instruction, and provide one-to-one feedback to the students that made their learning more powerful. And the students recognized that really supported their learning. The students also saw great value in being able to extend their class conversations and their collaborations with each other. They also stated that this digital tool helped create a different level of communication, not only communication but engagement and a different form of relationship with their teachers as well as other students in their classes. The students also liked the various tools and resources that they used. They expanded the types of things that they used to engage with the curriculum and engage in the conversation and collaboration with each other. And they enjoyed the innovative ways that they were using these devices to learn differently than they had been before this pilot. And they thought that the use of these devices and tools helped create a higher level of engagement with the curriculum, higher level of engagement with their teacher, and higher level of engagement with each other. And that collaboration with each other, I think, is so critical because we're trying to foster that 21st century mentality, that it's not individual learning, it's collaboration, it's communication with each other, and the students saw great value in that. We also asked our teachers what they thought of the pilot. What feedback did they provide to us? And a lot of the results they gave to us mirrored the same results the students gave to us. The teachers expressed the need for devices that worked for as many purposes as possible, and that some devices did have limitations. We had some devices that students were not able to perform certain learning tasks. We had to find alternative devices to support those students. So device selection does make a difference. We also found that when all students had the same device, either the iPad class or the Surface Pro class, if instruction was designed around that device, and there was a challenge with that resource working on that device, the learning in that entire class stopped because they didn't have the resources to go forward. Versus if we each had different devices, and five of us no longer have a device that works with that resource, that's okay. We're able to work and collaborate with each other. Learning did not stop because one device didn't work when every student had different types of devices in front of them. So it really opened up opportunities without having a barrier of every device no longer working for that function. When provided a single device for all students, learning was designed around the device. And this is critical. The teachers that had the iPad or the Surface, they thought first, what's going to work on the iPad? What's going to work on the Surface Pro? And then they designed the learning tasks around that. Flip that around. The teacher with the BYOT class was able to say, this is what I want you to learn, this is what I want you to prove to me, this is what I would like you to demonstrate, to communicate, to create. And the students then figured out how they wanted to accomplish that. So the learning took center stage and not the device. So the focus became on the learning, and that's really critical in what we're trying to accomplish here. And that's a prime reason why that BYOT really is the recommendation that we have moving forward. The teachers saw an improved workflow for themselves and their students. They were able to design lessons that were more interactive, then increase the level of collaboration with students both in-class and out-of-class. And they used tools and increased the speed and the quality of feedback. We spoke of that feedback before. So students were getting real-time feedback from their teacher. In the past, they recognized that there was a lot of time that was wasted. Time wasted when they needed to coordinate and figure out when the mobile lab was available, time to get the mobile lab into their classroom, time to distribute those laptops to the students, time to collect those laptops at the end of class, time to report if there was issues with those laptops. All of that went away. If they wanted to do a learning task that had technology enrichment built within it, they just asked the students to take out their device they're ready to go. And that really changed the type of structure and planning that these teachers had. Along with that, the teachers felt a sense of flexibility they didn't have before. In the past, if they recognized an hour before they're ready to teach that lesson, and they have this realization that they could teach it differently with the use of technology, if that mobile lab wasn't available, they couldn't do it. Now, they could decide, okay, I'm going to make that change. Or in the middle of a lesson, if they recognize that they want to use some sort of feedback with their students, they can just do it right then and there. They're able to switch up and take advantage of that technology and have that flexibility of learning that they didn't have before. And that was key in the evidence that the teachers presented to us in the feedback. And finally, the teachers recognized that they want more professional learning, not only on how to use the device, but how to ratchet up on that SAMR model, on the model of integration to the highest levels. They want to see more of how they can take their lessons and bring it to the highest tier. While they were doing many of that, they really wanted to recognize and learn how to even push it further and how to make that happen.
Rob, could you take a moment and explain the SAMR model?
Absolutely. So the SAMR model is a model of technology integration. At the lowest level, it's substitution. So I'm going to replace this learning task with this technology. Take a writing sample. Instead of writing it, I'm going to type it. The next level is augmentations, it's slightly different, and you get to modification and redefinition. So at the highest level is modifications, redefinition. You really have fundamentally transformed that learning task. So if you take out technology out of the room, this is the way that I try to explain. If I take technology out, then the learning is going to fundamentally change as a result of taking the technology out of the room. I've transformed the learning, I've modified, I redesigned it. As opposed to that writing example that I substituted, if students are typing and I pull the technology out, they could accomplish that same learning task just by writing. We haven't really changed the learning as a result of that. The collaboration and the feedback is a perfect example of how we're able to transform and provide students that instant feedback. The students, for a number of different units, we're using Google Hangout as an example, where they were doing video sessions with each other, talking about the work. They were videotaping that and using the Hangouts for Air, which allows them to record it. The teacher is able to watch that recording and provide feedback back to the students. None of that would have been able to happen without the use of those tools. So that's another example of how they have redefined what the learning looks like inside of that environment as a result of having those one-to-one devices. So moving forward, what does this pilot tell us about our future with BYOT here in New Canaan? First of all, I'm going to bring it to speed. This year was our first year with a program called TechSperts. This is a program that was dreamed up by our technology integrators as a level of technical support that students volunteer to participate in either in independent study or during free periods. That they learn technical support skills, they learn integration skills, they learn some coaching skills. And when a call came down to the tech integrators, the students would respond. They would create video tutorials for teachers. Students would come down, they'd provide tech support to the students. During the course of the BYOT, if students had trouble with their device, they came down and the TechSperts students worked with those students. We just deployed and launched today a digital data repository of video tutorials and tech support information to provide assistance to teachers. Those TechSperts students provide a lot of that content that went up on that website. So as we move into BYOT program, one of the things that we recognize is that there needs to be a level of support for students and teachers that goes beyond what the district technology services can provide. Having those TechSperts students available to provide that first level of support is key. So being able to expand and grow that program is going to help marry and merge with the BYOT program so that as students have more devices here, there's that initial level of support for the teachers and the students. I'll also mention that for most of the professional learning days that we've had, those students have come in on their days off and helped the tech integrators and helped the teachers run those sessions, which has just been a fabulous commitment that those students had to the success of that program. And Chip was one of those members of that team there. The students also need access to loaders. So if I come in one day and my device doesn't work, what's the avenue I have to go down to the library, to the TechSperts, and check out a device for that day or that week? So it's critical that there be a bank of devices available so that students have those devices so that they can check out. As well as, as strange as it sounds, access to cables, access to charging stations around the school. Not all devices work all day long, and not all students remember to bring their chargers. So having a place that they can plug in or check out chargers. Our library program here has, I think, at least 100 iPhone and Android chargers that students check out on a daily basis. It's part of what they do here. Having that available is going to be critical moving forward. There needs to be continual analysis and a continual dynamic adjustment to the Wi-Fi. We've put in a fabulous Wi-Fi network in this building. What needs to happen is a continual analysis of the speeds of that network. So for example, in March Madness, as students begin watching those basketball games live on their laptops, which we don't want them to do, but we know they're going to do it and the staff are going to do it anyway, are we watching the speeds of the network to make sure that the traffic that's being used is being used primarily for educational goals? At the same time, we ratcheted down the speed of the student network in order to overcompensate and increase the bandwidth for testing. Well, there was an impact on the students, the BYOT program, as a result of that. So being able to really analyze and monitor the traffic on a dynamic basis to make sure that all learning needs and assessment needs are being met, and that one isn't being compromised for their having that balance there is critical. The students said, and the teachers said, that they needed orientation around their devices. How do they connect to the network? How do they print if they want to print? How do they use it for minor tasks? So having that initial tech orientation is critical so that students and teachers are comfortable with what they have. Students want to see the value in having the device. They recognize the weight of the device, but they're willing to overcompensate and adjust for that if they knew the teachers were using those devices in all their classes. And they said they saw the value if it was being used, and they'd be willing to do that if they knew the teachers were expecting the use in other classes. And granted, this pilot, we're focusing in three classes, so it wasn't expected of them in other classes, but they recognized that if the teachers were, they saw increased value in their devices. Students have different needs and different preferences of devices. Some students love the iPad, some love the Surface, and some love the MacBook Pro, and some loved other devices. Having that choice there was critical because the students really had a sense of ownership over what they were selecting. And finally, and I can't underscore this, it must start with the curriculum. The decisions must be about the curriculum and not the device. That was loud and clear from the teachers. We need to lead with the learning and not with the device itself. So what are our next steps in the program? First of all, we are recommending that there be a ninth-grade component starting in January. And as students lead up to that, we provide students with digital citizenship lessons. Originally, we were designing in one way. We're making a change to how we think we're going to roll that out. So the high school team, along with Dr. Corenti, are working through a plan on how we're going to design those lessons and roll that out for the fall. We need to have continued professional learning for the teachers. You spoke about the SAMR model. That's part of the plans come the fall, part of the plans come the end of November, Professional Learning Day for the high school faculty to get ready for that. We are making the recommendation in the Board of Education to move forward this summer with the plan for the January rollout for the BYOT program for the ninth-grade students with a larger-scale rollout the following September, assuming everything goes smoothly. In order to realize that, we need to communicate with parents, and we want to communicate with parents this summer with what the expectation is so that they have time to adequately prepare their finances to either give a device in their house to their child or acquire a device preparation for January. And along with that, we have a set of recommended guidelines of what we would recommend a parent provide their child with. And that actually, in the appendix, is a sample, current recommendation of what we would put inside of that letter. So now that we've gone over the BYOT program, that doesn't stand alone. That is really married and merged and aligned with the digital learning updates that we did this past year. I'm going to go over a quick overview of that now. So this year, our ICT team, and as a refresher, our ICT team includes our technology integrators and our librarians. We worked with Dr. Corenti to have access to an external consultant that we began meeting with back in November with a smaller writing team. And we came up with a whole new framework for our ICT skills and concepts. And primarily, we came up with three strands, and each strand had three enduring understandings. That framework is built upon the concept that in any experience the students go through here, and either here in school or beyond, the students need to be able to do three things. First, they need to be able to locate and access text. We brought, we came with our own definition of text, which broadly includes any medium that contains information, such as print, videos, pictures, graphics, digital resources, to name a few. Second, students need to be able to understand, analyze, and respond to the text. This includes evaluating the resources and making meaning for a wide array of those sources. And third, students need to be able to communicate and produce products that share what they have learned, what they have designed, what they have built, what they have created, what they have researched, et cetera. This is often done collaboratively through the use of 21st century tools. Through in all that, the students are learning a set of skills and concepts to make that happen. And what we've done is we added skills and concepts to each of those enduring understandings within each strand. We determined the grade levels of the skills or concepts would be introduced, when they would be reinforced, when students would be expected to demonstrate mastery. What I provided to you on your packet there is a sample of one of the pages from the frameworks. You can see that we have a set of concepts, skills that go along with that, resources that support that, and then the grade levels that work with that. Today alone, our K-14 worked through this and identified those skills and concepts that they are directly responsible for teaching, those skills and concepts that are combined partnership with the classroom teacher, and those skills and concepts that are embedded within core content areas that classroom teachers would be responsible for. As a reminder, our ICT framework is taught through both direct instruction and integration. At the elementary schools, all students receive explicit instruction when they're dropped off for computer class and library class. Teachers in all grades are encouraged to integrate ICT into their instruction, and they have access to technology integrators, access to librarians for both coaching and co-teaching at all levels. We view this level, this type of work, as a shared responsibility. It's not just librarians, not just tech integrators, not just classroom teachers, but a collective effort to teach the ICT skills in a broad way. We have had a lot of success the past two years teaching digital citizenship in grades two through four. It's been part of our core instruction. This upcoming year, we're expanding that to instruction that will provide opportunity for all students in grades five through eight through a new model that we'll be using through the workshop classes. This morning alone, I spent three hours with the social studies teachers, with Mary Hannah, who's the K-8 social studies coordinator, preparing those teachers on how they will learn those digital citizenship skills and be ready to teach those lessons come the fall. Finally, we're adding a set of lessons, as I spoke of before, for all ninth-grade students to experience and learn digital citizenship. The next layer of this work is for Dr. Corenti to put together a committee that's going to work on putting together a research framework that's a set of scaffolding research from elementary school through high school. It might be two different frameworks so that students are in a consistent scaffold approach to research. That's aligned not only to the ICT framework, but to the core content areas of science and social studies and language arts, so there's a consistent and aligned approach and scaffolded approach as students go up through the grades. As we bring this presentation to close, I'm going to share with you what I view as the next steps for New Canaan. First, it's been every three years the state has required a technology plan. They did not require a specific template this year. So districts were asked to put together whatever they wanted to put together. Technically, our technology plan expires this summer. I'm recommending that the technology plan, the framework, is twofold. One, it's your BYOT model moving forward in the high school. Two, it's the ICT framework. Lead with curriculum instruction first, and then design the infrastructure, design the support that you need to make that happen, and let that be the foundation of your technology plan and build the structures around that. The BYOT program was a success. It really was in terms of improved student learning, and the students are recognizing those devices supporting their learning and 21st century skills, and teachers recognizing the value. It's time to formally approve that plan moving forward and to notify parents of the shift in expectations at the high school moving forward. Last summer, we updated our acceptable use policy. The primary changes dealt with privacy and confidentiality to protect our student data. We locked down the process so tightly that teachers can't right now really vet new resources without a signed agreement in place first. So I'm recommending a new statement be placed. I'm going to give Dr. Corenti, Dr. Ludzzy, a recommended statement that's going to go into the acceptable use policy before I go, which gives teachers the academic freedom to try some of these resources in a safe, confidential way without violating the acceptable use policy and before a signed agreement could be reached with the vendor. Teachers also need training and additional professional learning on how to apply those new standards to what they do. So as they're using those accepted resources, the new ones, what's the expectation? How do they remain safe and confidential and protect the privacy of their students? And finally, we've rolled out what I believe is a set of remarkable tools through school wires for communication and collaboration with parents and students and the community. We need to continue providing that professional learning for teachers. Today alone, we trained over 100 teachers at ZACs. I think we ended up with probably more than 50 teachers at the high school, in addition to social workers and psychologists this morning here at the high school. So we've rolled out a lot. We've done training with a lot of small groups up to this point. We need to continue that training and expand out what teachers are comfortable using because the tool is very powerful, and they just need more time to work with it, and they'll really will start investing their resources to really take it to the next level, which it has the capability for. I want to again thank you for allowing me to share this information with you tonight. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to, again, allowing me to be your technology leader the past 11 years. And as I look back at the work we have done together, I am very proud of what we have done collectively to support and enhance the learning for all students in this town. And I can't be more proud and more thankful doing that with you. So thank you.
I think, I'm sure everyone wants to say some sort of thank you to you, and I'll just start and say thank you, first of all, for this wonderful presentation and the analysis and what's happened in the student work is very exciting and very appreciated. Let's just ask if anybody has any questions first about the report, if we could. Any questions that they have on what they've heard?
Yes, well, first, thank you again. You know, you've contributed so much to this district and, you know, I mean, from the big, you know, website changeover this year, and obviously, you're in sort of the, at the forefront of what's going on educationally right now. So thank you again. You'll be very missed, so. I did have a question about the rollout with the ninth-grade class. So it would be this incoming ninth-grade class, but in January of that year. You know, sort of, I know there's going to be some teacher prep, but obviously, I have a little bit of concern about sort of the mid-year rollout and, you know, getting parents on board and also teachers. I would hate for I would hate for a lot of expense and effort to be expended, and then, you know, sort of, they have the devices and we're not quite ready. So I want to understand what's, a little bit more about what's being done to prep for that rollout in January.
So essentially, the high school departments and teachers function through personal learning communities, professional learning communities, PLCs. And through those, the technology integrators and librarians have and will continue working with them on how they're integrating technology. And this year, they're really focusing on that SAMR model. So as we go into the fall, there'll be a concerted effort to really start talking about and planning for, how do they use those devices on a daily basis? And then come the November Professor Learning Day, we've carved out either half or the full day for those teachers to really get embedded and extensive training and redesign through that model. We know that anytime you start a program, that you're going to have initial productivity dip, you're going to have that. But I think what the teachers that participated this spring showed us is that as soon as they saw it, they started to see the value. And they were able to lean on the support through the technology integrators, through the librarians, through the experts, and able to work through those hurdles. I think going to be key is providing that orientation to the students and have that support, so it doesn't all fall back on the teacher to provide that level of support. But I think that the teachers in this building are excited. They've spoken about how they want to do this, and they're starting to kind of get their minds around what it's going to look like. You're always going to have a variety of teachers. You're going to have that, but it's a matter of the support that you put around them.
Rob, if I'm correct, weren't some of the teachers actually trying to expand the pilot?
They wanted to go, yes. They wanted to go more than just one grade.
Are there any things that are going to prepare the parents also, as well as the students in the process?
I would strongly recommend that as you roll out those digital citizenship lessons, that we do some form of parent workshops through the PFA, that we start to educate them on the types of learning that we're providing their students, the types of learning that the students are being asked to do at home, and their own learning, so that they know how they can keep their own children and their own family safe, and what types of rules and expectations they should have in their house. I think it's a comprehensive effort of not only the teachers and the students, but as well as the parents as well.
To bring them in. Other questions, just going down the line. Jean?
Yes, Rob, again, thank you, though, for your 11 years of service and bring some clarity to this question. Now, and one of the questions I have, which I thought would be, we would get to, is my understanding of the X to one is that, in fact, there are many devices that can fill a role, and there are at least seven of them. iPhone, iPad, Apple laptop, an Android phone, an Android tablet, a Windows device, and a Chromebook. And maybe there are others, and certainly probably will be others, if there are not others right now. What did the survey conclude? Did it conclude that we will support all of these seven devices, and that the students will bring in the one or multiple ones of their choice, or that in some cases, we will have to supplement them? What was concluded in that regard?
Right. We recognize that 99% of the students are going to bring in some sort of a mobile phone, a smartphone, and that's going to be with them. That's that X piece. That's the additional plus one. On top of that, we recognize that a device with a screen size so small actually gets in the way some of the learning that we want. So we're making a recommendation that a base level of screen size is what's required. And that's why we've rolled out some types of devices. We need it to be asserted, mentioned first. So we recognize that. We made a recommendation of, we'd like you to have this type of device, and students are going to have multiple devices. And it's a question of teaching them how they use those various different devices simultaneously to accomplish their learning goals.
Rob, can I also add in that it was, the teachers also felt very strongly about keeping our mobile carts in place, because there may be opportunities that they would need an iPad, you know, and all children would need to have an iPad to accomplish a task that they need to complete within the classroom. So they were eager to keep those carts in place, so that you would still create that X to one environment.
Right. Although I was trying to address my question to operating system slash hardware devices, with which I listed seven combinations. Do we support all of those seven, or do we plan to support all of seven, or do we plan to not support all of them?
The key is to help parents and students make that choice based upon the minimum specifications. Key to mind that we're not necessarily designing a learning task around Microsoft Office and that experience, we're designing a learning task that should be somewhat universal around multiple different types of devices. With that being said, there are certain devices that have limitations. Chromebook is a perfect example. Wonderful device turns on really quickly, does all the Google apps, sometimes much better than an iPad does. But what it doesn't have is an efficient way, right now, today, to make movies. So the students that had that, we do movie creation, we couldn't accomplish that task. So it's helping parents recognize and understand that if you select this device, these are the things that you might have trouble doing, and then we can supplement that with other devices in the school.
Okay, so if a student or a student parent want to bring in a Chromebook, we can technically support it for those features which it's capable of, and then they might have to bring in another device, an iPad, say, but that's their choice. If they want to do certain things on a Chromebook, we can support that, or those other devices.
Right. Because you might have a student that is in the project leadway program, and it's doing AutoCAD. You're not going to run that on a Chromebook. You're not going to run that on an iPad. You're not going to run it on a MacBook either.
How about my phone?
Not on your phone either.
Right.
Well, I think the phone is a great example, Jean, because the, I think part of what the findings were, was that the, based on screen size, in part, would help determine if the device was a consumption or a creation device. I can think of, a phone, for instance, is a great consumption device. You can go to the webpages, you can read, but it's not so powerful as a creation device. And so in the classroom and during the pilot, as they were working on these things, even to mention the Chromebook for movie production, that might be where the student takes out a phone, and videotapes with the phone, and then moves things around. And those are all the 21st century problem-solving skills we want our students to develop. So the, I think the committee is to be commended, in part, for taking an approach to this that was as open as it could be, but still helped to move the instruction and experience forward for the students. So there will be baseline specifications for devices as they look at kind of recommendations and purchasing, which will help the teachers to plan for those lessons in the classrooms, so they understand, going in, what capabilities all the devices have. But as far as beyond, but there's not going to be a standardization to say everyone must have X. It's just, all devices must be able to do X, Y, and Z. And so that helps the teachers in their planning, but also allows the students and their families to purchase a device that will hopefully stay with them for years to come.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm very, in summary, I'm very pleased that one of the conclusions is that the seven devices, and maybe there are more, are all supported by the system, the administration, if you will, or the school system. And obviously, they have limitations, and they all have limitations, including the ones that can do Autodesk, their limitation is you can't carry them around.
So Penny, you had a question?
Yeah, I guess if you said this, I'm sorry if I missed it. Are we going to continue the pilot in any way in the fall, or at least allow the teachers that were doing it to continue, or switch it to a different subject matter in the fall to gain a little bit more information?
We haven't, yeah. We haven't had any of those discussions at this point, although it doesn't preclude the committee from having those conversations.
I think the goal going into the fall is to train those ninth grade teachers in preparation for what happens in second semester.
So that might take most of the effort.
So, yeah, we'll be putting most of our resources towards that to help that launch be as successful as possible.
What was interesting too, Penny, when we had the Smarter Balance assessment going on, and we needed to remove some of the laptop carts at the high school here to bring to the middle school level, the teachers quickly learned that many of the kids have devices, and that if they just told them a day in advance, tomorrow, we will be doing this in our class, and it would be very helpful if you had this device. The kids were very willing to bring in the device, and those that didn't have the device, they were then able to use the supplies that they had to provide them with that device. So I think that we will see some of that continue on in the fall. We saw it continue on past Smarter Balance in the spring, where teachers were asking kids, we're about to go into this, and we know that you might want to have your own device here, because it's personalized, and you will be able to utilize it at any time and at home, and they were noticing that the kids, and I think that was part of why...
It will organically continue.
Yeah, so I think that it will organically continue, and I think that that was why some of the teachers were pushing, that we could probably go all grade levels because of some of those experiences they were having.
And it also speaks to the data that we had, where the students are willing to bring those devices in, if they see that the value added, that the teachers are going to use them. So if they're being asked to, they're going to say, well, it's worth my time to bring it into school then.
Hazel, I had two more. Both quick, I think. Just second, on the second strand, where it says, "Understanding and responding to text," it just struck me that, if you look at the essential understandings underneath, it includes the concept of analyzing and being critical, but the title there doesn't really capture that, so we might want to change it to kind of capture that, when you finalize. And then finally, I just wanted to say, in terms of working with you, Dr. Miller, for the last, you know, well, 11 years maybe, because I was on the high school building committee. I mean, you've been in such a creative field, where there's been so much innovation, and in a way, you know, you're just, you know, forging ahead into unknown territory every year. And one of the things that I've been impressed with in everything that you've done, you haven't actually been the person who's said, "Let's get the latest Apple Watch."
Oh, that would be nice.
Hopefully not offending those people, which might, some people have said is a little gimmicky, but what you've always been driven by is student understanding and student learning, and putting the student interests first. And I think that our entire district has benefited so much from that, and your knowledge and your depth, and you've kind of guided us into this new world in a very soft and nice way. And so I appreciate your critical evaluation and all you've done for the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to first start off with echoing from what Penny has said, to thank you for all your years of service here. I got a chance to work with you a little bit more closer on the website committee, and of course, you know, we needed that new website, and you've been so instrumental in getting that up and running, and very responsive whenever we needed to get changes or tweaks and such, for anything that we, you know, needed for digital. I got a chance to see you make presentations as my kids were younger, and you'd do a little technology updates, and this is wonderful, having you to get us really to where we need to be for 21st century learning. So thank you once again, from all of us.
Thank you.
I did have a couple of questions on just your presentation. And first off, I think it's great that the study showed that really, these technology is going to be a tool, because I know a lot of parents are concerned about the fact of how much screen time kids are spending, and that we're going to be looking at having more screen time in the classroom. But again, everything is driven by education, the learning aspect, and the technology is just a tool to help facilitate better learning, which is great, just that the study kind of followed with that idea. But I know that the weight of the device is a concern, and I know if anyone's had a high schooler, those backpacks get heavier and heavier every year. I mean, they're 50-pound backpacks. So with that, a lot of that is notebooks, you know, which I think will go down, because if you have a laptop or something, all that information's on there, you don't need to have those binders. But I wasn't quite sure what's happening to in the world of books and textbooks. I know some of them are going online. I know it's not, it's out of our control. What, any thoughts of, you know, is that going to go online soon more?
Over time, you're going to see the modeling, the pricing structure change drastically, hopefully, for e-text. Right now, the cost of an e-textbook is actually higher in cost than it is for a paper version. I know that sounds strange, but it is. That's just the nature of it. You know, as we move towards more open resources and more primary source documentation, and having the students accessing those records from those original sources, it's going to provide a great opportunity for teachers to bring in other types of resources that they're immersing their students in. But you're going to see a balance over time. It's not going to be immediate. I think long-term, you're going to see those textbooks convert over to digital, but it's not going to be overnight.
Okay. And then the other question I had is that I know as we're preparing to bring on, like, the ninth graders next fall, you know, you said that we were going to need to have a bank of devices and such, and if we're requiring this, is our bank big enough? Do we need to put more investment, or, you know, to make sure that we have enough for in January, and then again, for the following year, for doing the whole school, or, you know, depending on how we do that, with both the charging stations and the types of devices that we need for backup?
Right. I can't answer that question directly.
I've been in conversation with the PFA for a couple of months now, and they've asked how they can get involved and how they can contribute. And that's one of the areas where they're happy to and willing to contribute for us. They've been advocates of this approach and this idea for, you know, since we began, really, in 2013. So they're excited to help out, and I think that they'll help us to ensure that our bank is fully stocked.
Yeah. And I've got to say that the parents in this community have contributed so significantly to the progress that we've made. Every single initiative that we've done, from smart boards to iPads to the TV studio, everything we've done has been in partnership with the parents, and I see this no different moving forward.
We're certainly grateful for the hours that parents put in, fairs, selling things, all sorts of things to make this possible. It's not an easy task, and they're very good and open about it. Anybody else with questions? Scott?
Yeah, Rob, excuse me. Couple of quick questions. I'm concerned about the whole BYOT from a lot of standpoints. One is, not just that we have a bank that's full, because I think that there are going to be kids that forget a device that need one, there are going to be kids that can't afford a device that need one, and there's going to be, there's opportunity for tech envy, you know, and it's going to be, I think, a difficult time. There's no question that this is a necessary path, and one that we absolutely must undertake. But I'm just concerned that we spend a lot of time thinking about the sort of softer side of it all, and school climate side of it, because I think that that's going to be, I'm convinced that's going to be an issue. My other thought was, when you talk about anywhere, anytime, did we look at the, and really analyze the quality of the work that's getting done in these sort of little snippets between the soccer game and the, you know, is that, is the quality of work anywhere, anytime, how does it compare to somebody sitting down, focused, you know, in their room, in their library, whatever it is?
We have to keep in mind that that's not always the only time that they're working as well. When you talk about that instant feedback that teachers can provide, so if a student is working during that break between the games, they're editing, and they're writing a paper, they're putting a presentation together, that teacher that night could immediately provide, hop on, and provide comments and feedback right back to them, where at their next break, they're able to see that, and then to consider bringing that data in. So having that frequent access to the resources at the student level, and the teacher having frequent access to the student work, that allows the learning to continue rather than just one snapshot time. The students don't invest significant periods of time on working on the work, this is just added and above those periods of time.
I understand that from a theoretical standpoint, but did we look at it? Did we look at the quality of the work that came?
What I can tell you is that the teachers reported back to us that they saw increased student learning, and that was a result of the collaborations, the conversations, the work the students were providing.
Okay. And my last thought was, as we undertake suggesting to families that they spend a tremendous amount of money, have we looked at the strength of our purchase power of pooling and offering devices at a discount through the system, you know, by allowing everybody to kind of get together? Have we thought about that at all?
Have we saved some money? That would be nice for people.
Yeah, I mean, the New Canaan school system puts together 60 laptops. It's a lot cheaper than me going down and buying one laptop.
A lot of these vendors will offer competitive pricing for schools if you do package together group buys. They will also offer academic discounts just for singular purchases. So it does, those conversations could be had, and the districts that have done BYOT, a lot of them have tried to put together package deals that help support the finances behind that to lower the cost of the device.
And maybe even eventually, some surrounding districts as well.
Yeah.
And I think that is an important point, that there are some districts nearby, near and far, who have been doing this around BYOT and a similar type program for a couple of years now. So they've, we can learn from them, and some of the approaches that they've taken that have worked, and some that they've taken that haven't. For instance, one of the things is around those loner devices. You know, if a student doesn't have one for whatever reason, they're, for a nominal fee, that person could essentially rent one for the year. So they still have the advantages of anytime, anywhere, and they have it with them. It's not that they're coming in the morning, checking it out, and then leaving it there at night. They're actually using that for the year. And some districts have found that to be very successful, to help students. Maybe they have triplets that are all going into the freshman year next year, and they don't...
Or just twins.
Or maybe just twins. They're more common. So, you know, there are all kinds of different variables to account for, and so as we look around at some of our, some other districts that have similar programs, we've learned quite a lot.
And also, what do we do if a kid checks out a laptop and drops it and breaks it? What do we do, you know, if it disappears? Well, I mean, there's a lot of thought that has to go into the whole process.
And I think to, in part to Penny's point earlier, Rob, to be commended, we have not rushed headlong into this or into really anything that we've done, but when we have made a decision and made a commitment to do it... But when we have made a decision and made a commitment to doing something, we've taken the measured steps and done our homework and, you know, sort of put forward responsible and I think appropriate recommendations and.
Right. And during the pilot, we put those precautions in place. We had permission slips that parent and student signed that accepted responsibility for those devices, whether they lost or damaged. And we held those students and those parents accountable for damage that might have occurred while it was under the property.
We could look into insurance programs as well.
And there's tons of, yeah, there's.
Allison.
And I'm assuming that'll be part of the informational piece for parents too, is kind of guiding them in terms of what, you know, what types of technology to buy. Because you were saying before, obviously, certain things have certain capabilities and depending upon what that child's studying, what they're doing or, you know, we don't want kids to be aging out, obviously, and, and have needless purchases and that type of thing. But I'm sure that'll all be part of the parent informational pack and the guidance you're going to give them.
Yeah. And ideally, a parent purchases a device, that student has it for the four years that they're here.
Okay, great. And I, and I just want to take a minute, piggyback on what everybody else said. And, you know, when I think back, I remember when you were hired 11 years ago. And when I think back to you, you immediately had to play defense because it was kind of a time where we were justifying technology in the classroom. You know, it was looked at as a distraction, you know, and it was kind of, you were, we were all kind of defending, you know, do we really need it? And what purpose is it going to serve? And is it going to enhance education or is it going to harm education? And when you think of how far, you know, everybody has come in the last 11 years and you've been a part of that. So I just want to really thank you for your professionalism, your work ethic. What clearly comes through every time you present to us is your love of learning, you know, and your love of teaching. And I know you've taught me a tremendous amount. So I thank you very much and congratulations on your, on your new position and Ridgefield's a lucky, a lucky school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some more questions. Go ahead.
All right, I never got to follow up on my first questions, but I, it's hard for me to get rid of my budget hat. Through the pilot program, did you notice an increased use of tech support? And, you know, have you thought through sort of, are we staffed appropriately for tech support for a rollout of bring your own technology? Because I, knowing what goes on in my own household around technology, I can't imagine we're not going to have a need for more tech support.
It was interesting that as students ran into difficulties in class, the first thing they did was they looked at a friend in the class that they knew knew that technology and they provided support to each other. So a lot less went to the teacher themselves, but to each other as, as students and support. And then beyond that, the tech expert, that support staff of having the students at mid-level, there's very few things that actually went to the actual district technology services to provide the level of support for these three classes. So with that right infrastructure in place, I believe that there would be sufficient. Now, once you go full, 1,300 students in the building, you might want to take a look at some of those resources, but at the time, you will have some offsets. You might not have all the same technology in place because now students have some devices. So you're going to have some shifting, some balancing that needs to take place as a result of that. I think what's key is to continue the investment in the human resources, in the technology integrators, librarians. Because that's the piece, that coaching piece, that really is helping teachers understand how to use this at the highest level possible to support student learning. And some districts don't have the human side of the, the capital of, we've got a coach, we've got a professional learning, professional developer right on staff that can provide that level of integration and support to the teachers. So when they have that, you're, you see the use of those devices go up. And then what comes from that is the level of skills the students need to support each other and support their own learning.
And I just, a little, also on that, it's something else that we learned in doing our research, was that schools that purchased iPads, for instance, for all of the students and just, and handed those out, then it really became incumbent upon them to provide the support, right? Because it's a district device, we're letting them use it and we wind up doing that. With the BYOT, the students, it's as their device, you know, they would go different avenues to try to get some of that support. You know, certainly we, they did get help getting on the network and doing some of those other pieces. But as Rob was mentioning, sort of, they'd look to their friends, they'd look to the tech experts that are growing up there, look to other people. Instead of saying, oh, this, this device, you know, I need to bring it back, I need a new one, I need this. There's a little different investment in the device and the work that they're doing. So I think that's another advantage of the BYOT model over the school districts supplying for the, for the individual students.
In fact, when you looked at the actual work that needed to take place for the BYOT versus us assigning the iPad to the surface, it was a lot of work to assign those devices and get the permission slips and to collect them at the end and to make sure they're working. If they went wrong, something happened, we had to actually do the processing. So that was the bulk of the work. The students that had their own devices, it was few and far between that we actually had to even touch and look at.
I just want to comment on that tech expert program, which I think is a brilliant program. It's fantastic to get the students who actually, you know, at this generation probably know more than the adults do because they've lived and breathed and kind of come up with it. My son actually had a chance to participate as a part of the senior internships, I kind of got a little bit more into that. And some of the, the programs that created, you know, again, from their voice and, and they're speaking to other students, I think it's a much better form of communication. Plus with the, the person who's doing that, the skills that they learn, the skill set. So we kind of went on both sides. So like I said, brilliant, brilliant program.
I had a mundane question, I think, to ask, but I know people have asked this question and continue to ask it. How do we stand on keyboarding as far as with the upper grades, with the, with lower grades? What is the thought on that?
The, the research shows us that unless you've got a program, the students are going through a set frequency, X number of weeks and X number of days per week and X number of hours per day during that program. Doing keyboarding every four or five days or every six days is not going to work. It needs to be consistent. You know, by the time the students get up to the high school, when the majority of the work is expected to be typed, it doesn't matter if you're doing with two fingers or 10 fingers, as long as the students develop that proficiency and the accuracy and the speed using their own style. And that stems from originally learning back in the lower grades, what that keyboard structure is like. So at the high school level, the students are typing all the time. And whether they're doing it on a keyboard, an iPad keyboard screen or phone, that keyboard structure is still the same. And now with these mobile devices, you know, they press the button, they speak to it and the text, the speech to text is so great. It's all right there, including punctuation, line spacing, new paragraphs, everything. So you're seeing changes in all that as time goes on.
That's terrific. I think we've asked all the questions and, and I just want to reiterate again to say, first, I wanted to say thank you to the teachers and administrators who made this whole study possible so that we could learn so much. It really helps us to be able to make our decision process and we thank you for your leadership, not only on this project, but all the other ones that you've been involved with. And good luck in your new position.
Thank you. It's been a wonderful experience here.
For us too. I think that concludes everything, so thank you.
Thank you.
Not yet, you still have to work tomorrow.
Yes. And the rest of the week.
No more questions, I guess, is it? Thank you. Moving then to a second item on that, reports and recognition. Mr. Cass, or did you want to introduce any?
Thank you. At your places, I put two copies of enrollment reports, one for the full district, the other for individual elementary schools. I think everyone has one except Mr. Gress. I'll pass these around to Mr. Gress so you have your set. So the first one, just wanted to review, what we tried to do is capture what do our numbers look like today? So these are the latest that we have. And if you look at the sheet with the elementary Saks and high school numbers, under 15, 16, the black numbers, you'll see that if school started tomorrow, next year started tomorrow, these would be what our enrollments would look like. And, and also wanted to just give you the comparison for what were the enrollment numbers as of October 1st this past school year? So you can see that at the elementary level, we're, we're lower 31 students. At Saks, we're up 47, at 13, 39, if school started tomorrow. And the high school about pretty flat in terms of, in terms of the numbers. The numbers that we're always the most concerned about is tracking incoming kindergarten. And so on the second sheet, I provided you with what the enrollment numbers look like as of today for East, South and West School and, and the, the totals. I also, I know the board is always interested in seeing what the class size guidelines look like. And unfortunately, I've been looking at these numbers way too long. There is an error under West School, I noticed, for grade four. It should be, with 83 students, it should only be four sections, not five sections, with a class size of 20.8 and a total number of sections at West at 26. And with the pre-K, three sections of pre-K would be 29. So I apologize for that error. But overall, our numbers in kindergarten, if school started tomorrow, is at 287. And our projection has called for, for 304. So this is June 22nd. We will still continue to monitor these numbers every other week throughout the summer. And this is what, how our past practice has been to try to monitor the numbers, particularly in kindergarten, should the numbers go above our class size guidelines. And as you can see in kindergarten, the numbers are pretty close. We will continue to monitor those, those with the elementary principals. The section across the border that has been right at or above the class size guidelines is grade three. And you all remember grade two, that's this year's grade two. The numbers have been very close, but they've been holding steady. So again, whenever the numbers are close to at or above the class size guidelines, this is something that we, we continually monitor throughout the summer. And we will report back this summer about where we are as we, as we move forward. So I thought, if you might have questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer.
Well, if I can, and if, just to add one or two quick things, as you may recall, we had a second demographer take a look this year, the Prada, Peter Prada. And his projection, Prada's projection for our kindergarten next year was 271. So we are above, at 287, we're currently above the Prada projection, but below the NASDAQ projection. His total, Prada's total at the elementary level was 1660. So we're currently at the 1629, so we're running a little bit below that as far as the elementary grades go. If you're looking over at Saks, his, the projections from Prada were about the same. It was 349 in fifth grade, 310 in sixth, 375 in seventh and 307 in eighth. And as you certainly may recall through the conversations we had about demographies and demographics, that the middle school grades are typically the most reliable grades to predict because they're coming through. But I think it's just important to note that, because as Gary mentions, that kindergarten number is the toughest to nail down and does sort of determine what happens going forward. So currently at 287, we're between the Prada projection of 271 and then the NASDAQ prediction of 304.
Gary, quick question. Just given our experience at this point in time, between now and the start of school, how many more kids do we expect to sign up?
Well, it's, it's hard to say. I would, I would tell you that, I guess if I was worried about any number, it'd probably be the kindergarten numbers and that. My guess is if the last several years have been informative, that we may go over the numbers in kindergarten at a couple of the schools. So that, that actually wouldn't surprise me. Jill always has a, has a thought about that as well. And Jill and I have discussed this and we thought, you know, every summer, that's what we've been seeing for the last three years. So it really would not surprise me to come back here in August and say, yeah, at East and South, we're probably going to add a section and possibly even at West, you, you never know. Depends how the numbers fall.
But just in terms of the aggregate 302, or sorry, 287, which is what is signed up now in that kindergarten, we expect, I mean, people move in to New Canaan between June and August or September 1st. We know they do. There are people that move here specifically during that time period.
That's true.
So that their kids can start school in September. So one of the, as I look at this and you just look at the elementary piece, you're losing a class out of the elementary school of 357, which is a big class. That's the fourth, the current fourth grade. We're going to get a class in, and that's the biggest class that's gone through, you know, of all of the classes that are there now. And we, we have seen this up and down sort of cyclicality to it. As we lose 357 and we gain 287, that's a big difference. Now, the 357 moves to Saks, we're not, they're not going away, but it does change the dynamic. So what I'm really trying to think about is looking forward. We know, we don't know what's going to happen the year after that. We have some guesses and stuff like that. But we're pretty certain about how many we keep from the ones that we have already.
Sure.
And I'm just wondering, historically, we expect that 287 to go to 300, 310?
Well, my guess would be it's going to be around that low 300 number as was projected by NASDAQ. I think that would be probably reasonable. Jill, you think so?
I would think so. It's not unusual to see an increase in kindergarten students. I would probably watch carefully the numbers at East and South right now. As soon as you start to hit that 100 mark, it, they send it just grow. And it's not unusual for us to come back in the end of July and add another section into kindergarten. So right now, we'll see the big burst between now, the end of July, and then you'll see another kind of burst at the beginning of August. It's not unusual for the elementary schools to get close to 40 new students, grades one through four even, during the summer months. So right now, what we're experiencing is we're experiencing some of the withdrawals. So you have people who have put in the withdrawal paperwork and those are reflected within the numbers. And we're waiting for the new people to be moving in to those homes.
But as you said, Scott, I think the good news there is with the large fourth grade class going to fifth grade, if that does happen at one of the schools, there is, the facility has room for that class and that's important.
Other questions or comments or concern?
Do you find that you were getting, getting as much of a burst over the summer with the kindergarten? I was just looking at the numbers, I think, I think Gary, that you gave me. And on June 6th, 2014, the kindergarten enrollment was 300 and we ended up last year at 304. So it was fairly, fairly close. I mean, maybe that was an anomalous year, but I'm just wondering with respect to kindergarten, because we've done so much to try and get those students in early. If you think that that's, I mean, maybe it's not any, maybe it still varies just as much.
Yeah, I'd say they're a little bit lower this year. I think one year ago today, I was sitting with about 305. So now I'm at 287, you know, one year ago, exactly around June 20th. So we're a little bit below, but.
But who knows?
Than we were last year and so we're continuing to monitor it.
Any other questions or thoughts about this? I think we're all looking at it. Thank you very much. Mr. Cass, I think we're all going to look at it and see, analyze it and go back to it. So thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Going on to our next item, we have Ms. Harris coming to do our statement of accounts.
Well, I am so pleased to present to you the May statement of accounts because I am able to inform the Board of Education. If you look at the summary page, you will see a grant offset at the bottom of the summary page. Today at 210, I received a copy of the transfer of the February payment of excess cost into the Board of Education's bank account, along with, it's a do-to-do-from kind of journal entry. And so you can see, we are now reflecting a positive fund balance as we project through to the end of the year. And Brian and I had a very productive meeting with First Selectman Malazi and Dawn Norton, the CFO. Last week, I provided additional documentation by account. I provided additional documentation by account, and the agreement had been made. And again, two-ten this afternoon, so I plugged that right in to our financial statement because we've been just kind of teetering on the edge, and we're coming down to the end of the wire. And so this was just great news. So hopefully, everybody is as pleased as I am that I received that. It will actually be booked as a negative expenditure into our regular budget, but I wanted to show it, I wanted to have it stand out for you folks tonight. Other than that, our projection in April had shown negative five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar balance. You'll see that I'm projecting small fund balance. The projections of salaries, and as you know, the majority of our employees are ten-month employees, and most of those ten-month employees actually opt to be paid over the summertime. So projecting out is a little bit tricky, but we actually will have, the projections are fairly dead-on, I believe. The hourly folks are a little more of a guesstimate because most of them stopped working last Friday. And so however, some of them were working this week on cleaning up and things like that. So from that perspective, the changes from last month to this month are not actually dramatic, except you may recall that the Board of Education, at one of our former meetings, Brian and I had mentioned that we were pooling together money from all kinds of sources in order to fund the Saks remediation. When you look at property services, you will note under project work, there, we transferred in a hundred thousand dollars into that budget. The bid opening for Saks remediation took place on Thursday. We are vetting and narrowing down the vendors as we speak. Gene Tyrone, Amy Valencourt, Brian, myself, Bob is on vacation. He'll be back on Wednesday. However, again, we've done already, Gene and Amy have done a lot of work. We've narrowed it down to three vendors to look closely at. Gene sent out a number of questions for D-Docs because we've fine-tuned what we're going to be doing. For instance, we found that we were not going to be replacing the rigging based on information from J-C-J, the existing rigging. We were not putting it back.
Oh, yes.
And so we could take a deduct there. And so we're starting to do those kind of minuses, along with a few minor pluses, such as figuring out how many holes the contractor will need to drill in the floor after it's all bead blasted and things like that. And how many did they factor into their bid versus how many do we think they're going to have to do? And those bits and pieces of things. So as soon as we've identified an award, we will cut a purchase order for that hundred thousand dollars here out of the Board of Education's budget. In addition, there is capital non-recurring money that we pulled from a variety of leftovers from other projects, moving from our, a painting project, et cetera. So the balance of that will go into the capital non-recurring, which has an extended life. But so that there's no surprises, there will be this hundred thousand dollar purchase order that we're going to cut either this week or next Monday or Tuesday for the vendor. And we will be paying down that as well. So I wanted to make sure that you all understood that there's this one piece hanging out there that's kind of, it was a patchwork quilt that we got it done. And so it's going to look like a patchwork quilt as it gets paid down as well. But I think that that's really, really important. We also have some dollars identified in projection. We've gotten professional quotes on the technical services to help us determine what the water problems are at West. There is not enough money in the capital non-recurring dollars. And so I have projected twenty thousand dollars on the property services page, just so that you're aware of it. And if you look at facilities specialists on the top of that page, it's third from the top, I've projected an additional twenty thousand dollars there. So I wanted to let you know, we do need to move forward with this. It is mission critical for us to find out what is happening at that school. And we need to, again, we're going to pool two different funding sources, so I will be letting a purchase order for that and one town purchase order as well. But we really need to move forward on that one over the summertime. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of some of the patching that I'm doing at this point in time. Other than that, it's really kind of wrapping up, rolling up our sleeves, trying to, schools have been, and all cost centers, we've gone through aging purchase orders at least on three different occasions now. People were reaching out saying, you know, do you, do you need this purchase order now? And there's, you know, been closing them out, closing them out. So balances keep shifting a little bit, and they will continue to do so. But I think we are ending the year in really fine shape, and it has been my pleasure to serve you.
I think that all of us are feeling very mixed about tonight and about this meeting and having this presentation be the last one that you do to, bring to us. And just thank you very much. And I think other people are going to want to say some things, but I just appreciate the effort especially you put in this year to all the things that needed to be carried on, carried on, and found, brought into the proper columns and places. So we thank, thank you very much for that and appreciate it. Questions and words that people wanted to say to Nancy? Yes, Deanna?
Well, I just want to thank you for your dogged determination. I don't think many people could do what you do. And I'm hopeful that, you know, your successor, I can't think of the word I wanted to use, you know, is able to, you know, fill the shoes as ably as you have. You know, it's been, and it's been a tough go, and you have handled it beautifully, and I appreciate it immensely. And I know the board does as well. So thank you. We will miss you.
Thank you.
Nancy, I think you have just been so wonderful for our district. I don't know what we could have done without you. Your breadth of knowledge of, you know, mandates, what, how things should proceed, looking at what needs to get done and bringing in the processes so that it gets done, not even only now, but just so that it continues on the future for your successor, is, you know, your tenacity to go after things and your presentations. You exude, you know, authority and knowledge, and it's just been wonderful working with you. And I love your sense of style, too. So thank you so much.
I had to wear color tonight.
Thank you for your help, Nancy. And I guess especially, very simply put, thank you for putting operations back into the job assignment.
Are we going down the line? All right. I have, I am in denial. I had prepared nothing. It did not occur to me that Nancy would be leaving. Ever. Ever. So I guess what I would say is, to me, you exude cheerful competence, resilience, and productivity. And you have taken us as a district to new heights. And it has been delightful to see how you have dug into the mundane, and you've given us a line-item budget, which we didn't have before. We have fabulous, a new accounting system that makes me understand the budget so much better with how we're encumbering everything. I can't imagine how passports do without it now. And I think that is one of the great marks of success. And you also have an incredibly fun side that's lifted the district, and that goes from the helping promote the wonderfully blue windows coming into South School and the symmetrically asymmetric muttons that I know Scott Gress will like when he sees. So it's been a delight to work with you. Thank you so much for everything.
My pleasure.
Do you will. Allison, did you want to say?
Just want to say, we've come a long way from the cup of coffee in the Westport diner a long time ago. But we were so lucky to find you, and we're, you know, I'm just so thrilled that you were willing to take us on. Because I know when you were initially hired, you were hired under one set of circumstances. And just because of unforeseen circumstances, things changed dramatically. And you just rolled with it with a smile like you always do, and your enthusiasm that everybody's talked about, and your tenacity. And you've just helped us immensely. I mean, there really are no words to describe. You came in with your broom and your organizational skills, and you righted our ship.
I rode my broom.
That's what I thought she was getting at. That's harsh.
That didn't even cross my mind. But now that you mention it, no, I mean, you've been fantastic, and we are a much better, a much better place because of you. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, absolutely, Nancy. We're not only fortunate that you came along, we were in desperate need for you to come along. And you really have turned things around and gotten us on the right road. And what's always been so impressive to me is, is your competence has taken away all of the superfluous arguments as we go through budget season. And your confidence has allowed you to quietly but sternly keep the discussion where it needs to be. And I think that has helped us in our budget process so much in the last couple of years. And we're going to miss you.
There has not been an area of the budget that you have left untouched, without your magical touch to make sure things are in the right places, to make sure that we're understanding what's going on. You have such patience, whether it was explaining the insurance five million times, or if you had to explain any of the things that were on the figures or why they were going in a trend, you kept us alert. It is, you have taught a tremendous amount. So we appreciate every minute that you put in, every hour, every day, every month, and more than, many more times than I'm sure that you were actually being paid. So I thank you very much for that extra effort that you've always given us, and it's been very appreciated.
And my going-away present is going to be an actual adopted budget book. So you may get it after I'm gone, but we're going into production with it this week.
That's a gift.
And nobody's more excited about it than Nancy.
Hey, may I take a moment just to say that I'd like to publicly thank Nancy for her support of special education in the district over the last two years. She has been a wonderful influence, a tremendous mentor to me. I have been in situations that have been very difficult, that she has helped me to understand and work through with ease. I have learned a tremendous amount from her, not only professionally but personally. And she's been a most fabulous colleague. And talk about being in denial, I am definitely. But I have her address in Sarasota, so.
Good. Again, this is a sincere tribute. Everyone feels the same way, Nancy. Well, now, moving to our action item, number six, the education specifications for Saks Middle School Building Project. And we need to have a move to approve the educational specifications for the Saks Middle School Building Project. And is there first a discussion, or do you want to move first?
What do we?
Mr.?
So move.
You want to make a motion, okay? And a second on that. Is there any discussion that anyone would like?
I can say a couple of words.
Thank you.
About this. And you did, I think, receive an electronic copy of the educational specifications last week.
Yes.
But you also have in front of you a hard copy printout of the specs and the appendices that are included. The educational specifications are the means by which educators describe the activities and spaces that need to be included into a proposed new or renovated facility. They're the foundation of a successful school building design and provide a written description of necessary components of a project in order to communicate those requirements to an architect. These educational specifications that you received really are the, are a result of the hard work from the Saks Building Committee in combination with a couple of different architects that have taken a look, both architects from SLAM and then the new architects from J-C-J. They also, as you know, we hired two demographers to take a look. We had NASDAQ, who has generally been doing our work. But as we saw that and started, the committee started to have some discussions about what the ramifications of that may be. They, we also went and asked Peter Prada to create a second set of demographics. And those are included in here also as part of the ed specs. You know, when we think about Saks, the building, it's important to recall that the nineteen-ninety-nine project over at Saks was prepared, the middle school, to handle about twelve-hundred students. So when we look at those demographics, that's why that's so important in our conversation as we're going through. But it's also easy to be talking about the addition over at Saks and lose sight of the fact that there's other significant work that we're talking about as well. And the educational specifications here help us to keep all of that into perspective, meaning the renovation to the auditorium, which was removed from the last renovation that occurred over at Saks due to financial reasons, really. When we asked, as you know, the architect with J-C-J was the architect of the last renovation, and somebody said something, well, it was determined that we didn't need to do the renovations. And he, it's great having the same person because he was able to take, think about it for a moment, said, no, that wasn't why they were, it was removed. It was removed, it's still, it needed work back then, but it was removed because of the budget and the finances. But the ed specs help us to keep that in the discussion and in the consideration as well. And also the work that has been identified for the VPA area of the building. As you'll recall, the Saks Auditorium Committee that started meeting in the fall looked also at some of the areas for band and chorus and orchestra. And the determination was quickly made that those sizes were undersized. And then they took a look at that. And then it was, soon thereafter, that the needs in the building were identified as such, and the committee was turned into the Saks Building Committee. So these ed specs sort of help us as, along the way, they've been developed. And now, as a Board of Education, as part of our application to the state, is asked to approve these ed specs. They also know, and there's been some conversation about the other larger spaces in the building, specifically the library, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and questions around, are those adequate? And the committee and the architects both looked at that and thought about it a bit in the conversations, and determined that, you know, similar to the addition that we're, that the committee's proposing, those spaces meet most needs. You know, there are, in the library, in the gymnasium, in the cafeteria, certainly there are ways that the administration and the teachers have to kind of make some adjustments, whether it's in scheduling and other ways. But that those, the determination in the educational specifications is such that those spaces do meet our needs as we look at the program over at Saks. And another, just, and And another just important part of that, Scott, you mentioned the fourth grade moving into fifth as being one of the larger classes. Well, the largest class in the district, as we look across K-12 right now, is the sixth grade. And as, you know, there have been some struggles, certainly the beginning of the year, there were some struggles with sixth grade in the cafeteria, and probably last year in fifth grade as well. As a result of those struggles, we made some changes, and we invested some money into some new equipment and changes to the flow, and we're continuing to look at it and to make some changes around there as need be. But it's important to note that the way the scheduling works in the middle school, that three seventy-some odd students that are in sixth grade now going up to seventh, as the largest class in K-12, are showing us that we can make these spaces work, because the scheduling is such that it's a whole grade at a time. So, even though the enrollment is going up at Saks as we look at it through the years, it's not that any one class is larger than that sixth grade going into seventh grade class. So, because of the way the scheduling works, we've shown that the, these spaces can handle that capacity of student. The concern with the addition is really around the overall size of the student body, five through eight, but those individual spaces, what's more important is the size of any one individual class. So, I hope I'm explaining that in a way that makes sense, but I just think that's an important consideration in the discussion. You know, it's not that one class is coming in that's larger than that sixth grade going into seventh grade class, it's just that all four of the classes will be larger than the average class is now, and so those sizes keep going up and up. So, the educational specifications before you include, you know, some of the details and the findings, but also the backup documentation in the appendices. That includes the enrollment projections, the space pressure summary, the space inventory, and then the information around the music program needs. And so, as a Board of Education, you know, part of the process is for you to review, and if you feel appropriate, approve these to go forward in the design. And if I've left anything out, we have other experts in the room that are certainly welcome to chime in.
Any questions about this? Talk to me, yes, Scott.
I don't have a question as much as I have a comment. I think Penny and Jim and their committee have done an incredible amount of work in a very reasonable period of time, and it's a very thorough look at what we need. You know, a number of months ago, I had said, you know, "If you had five million more dollars, what would you do with it?" And I think that when you look at a project like this, I've seen this town underdo project after project after project, whether it was the elementary schools, which by the time we had spent tens of millions of dollars, couldn't house the fifth grade, to redoing Saks Middle School with a library that was, I mean, an auditorium that was, you know, contaminated with PCVs. We need to do the proper job, but we need to do it now, and we need to do it fully. And as you read through these specs, they make a very strong case for this is what's needed, and I would be really disappointed to see us underscale this project, particularly the classroom side of it.
Yes, Allison.
I totally agree with Scott, and it was unfortunate, I was unable to make the last two meetings, the one to the Town Council and the Board of Finance, and so I was really dismayed to read in the paper, the advertiser article, showing kind of a loss of support on the town side for voting and giving the approval in July and rather putting it off, and it sounded like there was an increasing appetite at the town level to slow the project down or to put it off for another year or so. So, I completely agree with Scott. I think that's an enormous mistake. I think we know the need is there, the need is proven, we've hired all the experts that needed to be hired, everybody's giving the same feedback, the kids are in the school. I can't imagine that parents would appreciate their children going for another, an additional year without an auditorium. I'm not so sure, and I guess this question is for Penny, if putting it off, it seems to me like you've given them a tremendous amount of information to digest, putting it off for a half a year, a year, whatever it is, is there any additional information that you would be giving them that would make any difference to this project, given the fact the students are already in the school, in the school system?
Actually, I don't, I don't really think so. I mean, we have been working and having lengthy meetings every week as the Saks Building Committee. We've spent the, the two areas of Saks that really need the most help are the music rooms, they've been overcrowded, and the lack of academic classrooms has caused many, you know, not enough classrooms for the enrollment coming in and having a number of students, regular students and special ed students placed into spaces that are not appropriate, that are undersized, significantly undersized for the education that's taking place there. So, the study that we undertook came up with a recommendation for the 12-classroom addition, as well as improving the size of the music classrooms to rectify those conditions. So, I think this is, that proposal has been vetted by two architects who routinely design middle schools. It's been vetted by Dr. Lutze, by Greg Macedo. The committee is fully behind it. And so, our intent, just to be clear on the schedule, if you look at the schedule, we need to have construction drawings done by the fall of 2015 so that we can take them to the state, get them approved so we can go out to bid, so that we can go out to bid in January. And that way, we can get a shovel in the ground in June of 2016. If the project's delayed six months, obviously, we will not be getting a shovel in the ground of, in June of 2016, and we would miss the September 2017 project completion date, which is what we're striving for. So, our plan now as a committee is, our recommendation is the 12 classrooms, so we intend to report back to the town bodies in July, July, Tuesday, July 14th, and Wednesday, July 15th, to the Board of Finance and the Town Council on our option A and B. We'll probably select, we'll evaluate those a little bit more and select one or the other as being the best option for the school. We'll put that forward and tell them that that's what we're going to be designing, that's what the architect is going to be, you know, designing for the rest of the summer, because the contract provides for just one set of construction documents, you're not going to do two. So, if the town bodies don't like that, they'll have to tell us to, you know, full stop at that point, which I don't think they will. I think we've had a lot of really good discussions with them, a lot of good support from a lot of people on the town bodies, but that would be the plan of the Saks Building Committee. And so, I'm excited about that, and I think it's a project that will stand the district in good stead.
Sangita?
Yeah, I agree with Allison to bring up that the timing is very key in this. I mean, if you look at Gary's projection numbers that he just gave us today, as of today, we're going to have 1,339 students at Saks next year. I mean, that we know for sure. Again, it was designed for 1,200. Greg Macedo's been doing his magic, he's going to have to do his magic. Even if we stay on the schedule of trying to open up and have everything available, it's going to be September of 2017. So, we've got a couple of years of magic to still do. If we don't act on it now, we're just putting, again, you know, more kids that are not going to have the teaching spaces they need to provide the type of education we as a district want to provide. So, I think timing is key, and it's important for everyone to keep that in mind, that we are on a tight schedule, and we need to stick to that schedule.
Anyone else want to? Yes, go ahead, Deanna.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I want to congratulate Penny on the Herculean effort and job that you have done in this process, and I think that you have gone above and beyond in responding to the town's requests and providing the data that supports the 12-room addition along with the expansion of the performing arts spaces at the middle school. And I think at this point, you know, people may want to slow down. I understand it's big dollars and it's scary, but, you know, we owe the kids of this community no less. I mean, it is what people move here for, and it's, you know, it's here, anybody wants to see these documents, they're public documents, they can take a look. There's no smoke and mirrors here, it's what we need. So, thank you again for, I know it's been an exhaustive process, so thank you.
I just wanted to say, the Town Council did state when we were there that they're going to have a public hearing before their next meeting, if they're going to start their meeting a half hour early. So, I would just encourage any citizens, any parents that are interested that haven't made their opinion known, to please be, I think it's going to be in the new Town Hall, that's what it's noticed as, I don't know, check, check the location closer to the time, at 7:00 PM on July 15th, and to state, you know, what your views are with respect to the project. Would be a huge, great benefit to the project if you did that. Thank you.
I think, I think with the information that's presently available, that we have certainly put a case forward, that is a strong case, that this is what we need to have happen for the kids that are in the schools. I think it's important for people to remember that a student is only in seventh grade one year, or in eighth grade, and those years are particularly important as they are going on in the school year by year, and to have classes that are oversized, which is what we are looking at right now, to be the future of what's going to happen.
Oversized.
I mean.
The class is oversized for the space.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
Undersized space for the class.
Sorry. Saying that classes are going to be oversized for the space that they're going to be in, and that's something that will definitely affect the education. Anyone who's a teacher or anyone who's been a student in a class where there were too many students in the room, and it was not possible for the teacher to possibly zero in and to find what the students, every student's need in those classes can be. So, I think it's an important thing for everyone to realize that this is going to impact those children's education, and that has not been something that we have been, have had happen in New Canaan. I think that the public and the parents have been very supportive of our schools, and we need to continue to have that happen. At this point, we have a motion on the floor and a second. We will now have a vote. All those that are in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your hand, and that is unanimous of the people that are here. Thank you very much. Announcement of future meetings. Dr. Lutze?
Consent agenda.
Oh, excuse me, consent agenda, I'm sorry. Consent agenda. Move to accept the resignation and the resignations of two people. That's been moved, and is there a second? Thank you, Scott. All those in favor, please signify. That's unanimous by the group for the consent agenda. Now, the announcements in future meetings.
Great. Well, our next meeting is scheduled for July 6th. We have, we will have an athletics update from Mr. Egan. He was coming, planning to come tonight, but we thought that maybe we could have more board members on the 6th, so we're hoping that we'll have everybody here, and he'll be going through for us, you know, some information about the budgeting and so answering many of the questions that have come up throughout the year. And we'll be keeping an eye on enrollment as well, as Gary mentioned, so.
Sounds good. Now, in a, we need to adjourn to an executive session in accordance with CGS 121, 210B. The subject to be discussed is negotiations. Is there a move that we adjourn? Thank you. A second? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.
You can do that.
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 You can do that.